Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 25th special called Work Session. I now call this meeting to order. Before we get started, wanted to first, October is National Principals Month, and we wanted to just say thank you to all of our principals for your hard work, your dedication. Thank you for keeping our schools running. Next, I wanted to remind all of our students, staff, and families to continue to please share their thoughts and feelings on our budget by completing the form that's been emailed out last Friday. That form can also be found on the website. So if you did not get it, this is an opportunity for our community and our parents, students, faculty, staff to share their thoughts about the budget process and what we're presently working on. That will be open through Sunday, October 31st, so that we can then have the notes from that for our meeting on November 1st. Finally, I do want to say congratulations to our Cougars on their win against North Bonham on Friday night. That was a great score, great game. So let's see. So we have a quorum. Can I have a motion to adopt our agenda?
Yes, I may.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. First on our agenda is our selection for a new vice chair. And I have my handy notes here for this. So I will open up the floor for nominations for the position of vice chair. Do I have any nominations from the floor?
I nominate Martha Geithner.
Okay. I have Martha Geithner. Do I have any other nominations? No, I'll nominate Peyton O'Connor. All right. Hearing no other nominations, I hereby close the floor and will proceed to vote. All right. All those in favor of Martha Geithner as vice chair, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Any opposed? Okay. All right. And well, that was a majority. So our new vice chair is Martha Geithner. Congratulations. All right. And I'll clap for you. So there we go. All right. Well, that was quick and easy. Looking forward to working with you, Martha. Okay. All right. Next, we have our co- Okay. All right. Next, we have our COVID protocols and updates with Ms. April Dockery, who is sitting all the way over on the other side of the room. It's okay.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Superintendent Freeman. Tonight, I'm going to give you a quick update on our safety protocols. I do have athletic director Sanita Warren Dixon ready to join me towards the end of this part of the presentation. I just want to remind the board that at the beginning of the school year, you asked us to revisit some of our protocols after the first nine weeks. After working with the principals and assistant principals and district office leadership, we have made some adjustments we want to share with you tonight. But first off, I want to remind our families that the North Carolina Public Health Toolkit is our guiding document on all of our protocols for Asheville City Schools. And parents and staff are still encouraged to look at that when they have any questions in relation to our COVID procedures. Last Thursday, I shared our update, our COVID numbers. You will see that we only had two positive cases last week, and we do hope that those children are recovering and will come back to school soon. I want to draw the board's attention to our number of students who have been excluded from school. Since September the 23rd, we had 167 children that had been excluded from school. As of last week, we had 65 students excluded. So, those numbers are going down nicely. And I would like to thank all of our families and our staff for doing such a great job supporting us in our mitigation strategies. And for the board's information, there have been 112 positive cases since August the 23rd for our school system. Any questions about this data before I move on? Thank you. I just want to remind us all that vaccinations are still the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID-19 pandemic. We are anxiously awaiting for approval of our five to 11-year-olds, and we are ready to support our local health department with vaccination clinics once we get the go-ahead. I would like to encourage families to please talk to your child's doctors about what this means for your family and if this is something that you would like for them to do. We understand this is a personal choice, but we do want to help all of our families get this vaccination if they choose to do that. I just want to remind people it's that time of year where tummy bugs are starting to happen and all the things. But if your child has a fever or has chills, coughs, shortness of breath, or difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle or body aches, headache, a new loss of taste or smell, sore throat, congestion or runny nose, nausea or vomiting, or diarrhea, they do need to stay home. This is true for our staff members. I want to remind all of us that we do offer COVID-19 tests for anybody who is symptomatic. And if you need that, you can call your child's school, and they can help arrange that for you in their parking lot. We can even do that here at central office for our families and staff. Like I mentioned to you before, our alignment with the North Carolina Public Toolkit, we follow most of all of the school's should guidelines, including universal masking for our staff pre-K through 12th grade for all of our students and all of our guests. We do encourage families, just like the previous slide, to self-screen for COVID-19 symptoms, and we encourage our staff to do the same. We maintain a physical distance at all times, at least three feet between children, and at least six feet between a student and adult, and six feet distance among our adults. The only two strategies that we don't follow is we do not ask our staff to report their vaccination status, and we do not use the screening program that we shared, April Bauer, and I shared with you a few weeks ago. Any questions? Okay. All right. So, these are the things that are updated from August. We are now encouraging or allowing indoor field trips. We told our principals this last week. In locations where COVID safety policies are consistent with the North Carolina Public School Toolkit, the central office team, the CNI department, and my department will make sure that COVID protocols are enforced before we approve or send children to these field trip locations. We will continue to keep our staff and students as safe as possible, but we do encourage our schools to continue with field trips. We feel like that's a very important part of our school system. Do you have any questions for me before we move to next question? Community volunteers, this has been a really, I know many board members have gotten lots of questions about this. A community volunteers that are associated with an organization that have an up-to-date MOU will be permitted as long as they are following the COVID safety policies that we have instilled. And if you remember, back in September, early September, we worked with our legal attorneys to update our amendment to any MOUs. Okay? Any questions about community volunteers?
I do have one.
Yes, ma'am.
There are a lot of parent volunteer, grandparent volunteers, that sort of thing. I'm a volunteer. Are we able to go in and work with students in the classrooms now? Or it says COVID safety policies are followed, and I read ahead, permitted outside. So, are we allowed to now start volunteering or not?
Principals are not quite feeling comfortable with that yet.
Okay.
We are warning our principals.
Sorry, I believe that got... That's okay. Thank you. We feel like it's important to be a part of an organization, to have that support. And we're just not quite ready just to have the parents come in and do the classroom moms yet.
Okay.
We're getting there, but we just want to be really going baby steps. But I can bring that back up to the principals and see if that's something they would like to consider.
I would appreciate that, and I've had several people contact me and ask when they were going to be able to go in. So, that would be helpful.
And I know Martha skipped ahead.
Yes, I did.
A little bit.
Sorry.
So, go ahead and just go to the next slide.
My parents are... We're still going to continue to have parents. That's... Sorry, I apologize. We are very... See? We are still going to encourage our parents to come, but only during scheduled meetings. So, we're not just having... We just want to make sure we know who's in our building, and we are able to ensure that we're following safety protocols. So, parent volunteers are permitted outside. That is a little bit different, but volunteers who have completed the Level 2 training, that's the training that's required in the HR department. I'm going to work with Dr. Dickerson and Dr. Deckett to ensure that we add this layer of a COVID protocol training for our Level 2 volunteers. Guest speakers, sometimes parents are guest speakers, they will be allowed as well. But of course, the principal has a discretion. If they're not feeling quite comfortable with that yet for their school community, we're going to support them in that process. And every effort should be made for the guest speakers to be outdoors, but we will allow them indoors if the principal's okay with that.
Okay, so this goes back to what Martha was saying. So, there is a wonderful volunteer that's been reaching out to me.
Yes, sir.
And...
Do you know if that volunteer is part of an organization?
I don't. I don't know. I can... And I can check with that person.
Yeah, I can support you with that.
And, but they don't have to worry about this, the volunteer, Level 2 volunteer training?
It depends on what service they're providing.
Okay.
And I can help you with that, no problem.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Any more questions about parent volunteers? Okay, so it's becoming that time of year where we start having all-school or school events as we work towards the holiday season, and we have winter concerts. And the principals and assistant principals worked really hard on this. You're going to hear in a few minutes from Sanita Warren Dixon about the athletic procedures and where we are. And we just wanted to make sure that we were celebrating all of our students in our performing arts. So, we are, parents and community events will be allowed outside of the school day. Every effort should be made to plan the events outdoors, weather permitting. Indoor events will be permitted. However, students may not be required to participate in any indoor event and an alternative assignments given if the event is correlated with a student grade. So, this is true for our performing arts, our band. Because a lot of times, just for example, just because I have a kid in band, that his grade is tied into going to competitions and performances. And so, we just want to make sure we're supporting families who just aren't quite feeling comfortable with that. All indoor events must follow protocols as outlined by the North Carolina Public Health Toolkit. And parent and community events will not be permitted during the school day, and there will not be whole-school events. So, the holiday concerts that we had pre-pandemic were just not quite there yet. We won't do like a K-5 program at Isaac Dixon, but we'll chunk it up. And we will continue to use the virtual option that was very popular last year. And we, as schools feel comfortable, we want to give them that autonomy to make that choice for their school. Any questions? Okay. Outside agencies, this has been a really important piece. Services that are related to an identified student need will be allowed beginning October the 26th as long as the MOU agreement is in place and all COVID protocols are followed. If it's a contracted service, which we do have a number of those, we will make sure that they understand and follow our COVID protocols. And that will be the responsibility of the principal and the central office staff who work with those contracted services.
So, would that also, that would pertain to like tutors?
Primarily EC, EC departments, our mental health. We use a lot of outside agencies for that work, just for example. Any questions? All right. If you could help me get... I'm going to turn it over to Coach Warren Dixon.
Oh, wait, I have a question. So, you were saying that, again, with like the concerts, so Ashville High, like if Ashville High Band is going to do a concert, they are allowed to do concerts or they're not?
They are allowed to do concerts.
They are allowed, okay.
They are. We are very fortunate. Sure, 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 sure. The question was, are we allowed to have concerts at Ashville High? And yes, we are working with the staff. The administration on that campus is working with the band directors, for example, to plan something that we think is appropriate and as safe as possible.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening, Warren Dixon. How are you? We can't hear you yet. Hold on just a second.
That was me. I was muted, sorry.
Are you ready to go ahead and give us an update?
I am. Okay, thank you, April. We are, I just wanted to touch base just real quickly to talk about the athletic side and what we've been doing as far as COVID protocols. Since the last board meeting where we presented, Ms. Dockery and myself, I think we had with athletics that I'm familiar with just one case since then, and that was a breakthrough case of a student who had been vaccinated. We've not had to quarantine any of our fall sports. Most of them are concluding this week, and I think maybe next week will be the last week for fall sports except for football. We will begin our winter sports November the 1st, and that will be where we will really see where protocols have to be in place and really abide by them since they're going to be indoor sports with swim, dive, basketball, wrestling, indoor track. And I think that's it. So, that'll be our biggest challenge then is seeing if we can continue to keep our numbers down and our athletes and our coaches safe and also our spectators.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions about athletics?
Sanita, is there any type of protocol that our athletes or families have to go through? You know, like the, just slipped totally out of my head. Concussion, you know how you have to sign up on the concussion forms or you're used to. Is there something that families have to do like that for COVID as well?
No, there isn't. The NCHSA has basically thrown their hands up and said that they're going to go by whatever each LEA decides to do. I can say that what we're doing in Asheville City Schools has probably been the most stringent, and therefore, we've not seen the cases, we've not seen the quarantines that have been affecting everyone else. So, but basically, we don't ask, students can reveal to us whether or not they've been vaccinated or whatnot, their families. But we are asking them that when they do come to our stadiums and so forth, that they do abide by the mask policy if they haven't been vaccinated, and if they have, to make sure that they stay within their little space and so forth. But it's not something that we're actively policing because it's very difficult to do that. But we've just kind of been, you know, going pretty much on everyone's honor system.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and please keep up the great work. It's great to hear that we've only had one, one case. And that's a testament to the hard work that the staff is doing. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Do you have any more questions for me?
Any other questions for April? Yes, no, no? No, I don't think so. Thank you for that update. I know we hadn't heard what was happening with athletics in a while, so that was good to hear. And thank you for the dashboard numbers. The dashboard, I think, is, I've heard nothing but great things from people about that dashboard and helping to be as transparent as possible with our numbers. So, that's been great. So, thank you. Keep up the good work.
I just want to give another shout-out to Holly Murray and all the data managers who are really helping us keep our fingers on that and tabs for the board and our families. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Dr. Dickerson. He's going to give us some vacancy updates for the district. Need to get y'all some walk-up music next time or something, if you're going to sit that far away.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Freeman. I'm here to update the board on our current vacancies in the district. This year has been a school year like no other. We started a school year with a shortage of positions, bus drivers, custodians, instructional assistants, and certified positions. And I'm here to report today that we are still trying to fill these positions. And I want to let everyone know that I understand that there's been some talk about a hiring freeze. There is no hiring freeze. In fact, we're going to fill these positions. We're still seeking to fill these positions. And we're not looking to riff or furlough any staff. I want to say that loud and clear. We're not looking to riff or furlough any staff. There is no hiring freeze. I know all of our employees are working extra hard to fill these voids in our schools, and I'm hoping that we will see some relief really soon. With the shortage of staff, we are also experiencing a large number of employee resignations at the same time, which is a perfect storm. Since July 1, we have had about 38 resignations, and the breakdown of that is about 15 classified staff and 23 certified staff. Before I share our school vacancy slides, I've been asked by the board chair to address district turnover and attrition concerns. So, I do, I want to briefly touch on that. Did a little research, and according to the National Center for Education Statistics, and this is pre-COVID, 8% of our teachers leave the profession yearly, and another 8% move to other schools, bringing the total annual turnover rate to 16%. That means that on an average, a school will lose three out of 20 teachers. So, that's a national statistic. I read a recent research brief examining teacher and principal attrition from North Carolina Public Schools during the COVID-19 pandemic. This work is motivated by concerns about the effect of the pandemic on educator stress and burnout and by the potential for increased educator attrition to adversely impact students in schools. By comparing attrition rates during the pandemic to attrition rates in the three years prior, they found that, one, exit and transfer rates are generally lower for both teachers and principals during the pandemic. Two, older and retired eligible educators were more likely to exit North Carolina Public Schools during the pandemic. Three, reductions in teacher departures were larger in schools serving more students of color and more economically disadvantaged students. And four, educated departures were related to whether the school was offering remote or in-person instruction. So, we have the 2019-20 attrition report, but we are still waiting for DPI to approve the most recent 2019. the most recent 2020-21 report. I should have that report in the next few weeks. But based on the 1920 report, ACS attrition rate was about 17.5%. Based on the attrition, teacher attrition in North Carolina, that's K-12 by district report, in the 2019-20 report, ACS had the highest attrition rate in the western region. ACS had the highest rate in the western region. And the other neighboring districts, as you know, Buncombe County, 10%, Madison County, 6.4%, Henderson County, 8.5%, Polk County, 11.5%, McDowell, 9.4%, just to name a few. When comparing the other 14 city school districts, and keep in mind, we're one of 15 city school districts in the state, we rank somewhere in the middle. So Lexington City, 22.3%. Elizabeth, um, I'm sorry, Hickory County, 17.5%. Elizabeth is about 17.5%. Thomasville City is 16.1%. Conaples City, 17.5%. And Chapel Hills, around 13.5%. So all this to say, you know, we're somewhere where, you know, statistically where other city school districts are, and, you know, we have to understand that we're in a pandemic, but retention and, I'm sorry, not retention, but attrition and turnover is something that has existed in the district. And as we move forward, and what I'm gonna show you right now are the, the positions that we have vacant. We have about 60. You have a copy of the packet with all the listings. We have about 60 positions that we have posted and reposted for months, but we had no applicants. And the 60 does not include, and I'm gonna talk about this a little later, it doesn't include the 29 bus drivers that we're advertising for and the four TSAs. The reality is, has, has forced us to look within our district, look within our district to fill some of these key positions. Yes, it is a good thing to hire within and promote employees, but we are also creating other vacancies as we do so. So I will, I also want to say that this situation is not exclusive, again, to Asheville City Schools. I recently attended the Personnel Administrators Conference last week, and many of my counterparts are experiencing the same hiring circumstances. One of the biggest school districts in the state has a huge number of teacher vacancies, over 400 vacancies in elementary, middle, and high school, and I'm not even including the classified positions. So, it's unreal. So with that being said, I'm, I'm gonna share the board, with the board tonight, the updated list of vacancies by school and department. Let's start with the preschool, and I'm just gonna flip through these, I mean, you have copies, I'm gonna show the public where the vacancies are. You can stop me where you want, wanna stop me. This is the primary school. This is Ashville High School. This is SLSA. This is the middle school. This is Monfort. Claxton. Isaac Dixon. Jones. Paul Fletcher. UCS hearing. I created a separate chart for the exceptional children's department. I did include some EC positions under the schools, but I wanted you to identify or see that there are some additional, exceptional children positions that we are looking to fill as well. This is our maintenance department. Child nutrition, three positions.
Right, one at each school?
Yes.
Okay.
That was Claxton, I can't remember.
Jones and Ashville High School.
Yes. The 29 drivers, I want to talk a little bit about this. So we have been utilizing our resources with the people that we have. So in essence, what I'm saying is, you know, we have been used, we've been having drivers to do double routes, and we've been getting by. The only thing about that is, you know, drivers are driving these additional routes to help out fellow drivers, but it is causing a little stress on our drivers and our staff and our students and our families. With additional support ensures an efficient operation, and when the department doesn't have efficient support, they have drivers driving when they should be really focusing on themselves, self-care. We also have students losing seat time because they are late, and we have students on campus longer than they need to be, which may cause safety concerns due to lack of supervision. Ideally, the department needs one substitute driver for every bus we roll out, ideally. So that's where we come, you know, with relieving bus drivers from having to do multiple routes and having these sub-drivers, that's where the 29 drivers come in, and then the four TSAs, of course. Student Support Service, and that's one position. And I included our athletic department. Uh, before I, all right, all right, to entertain questions, I do want to point out that we do have some job fairs coming up at Western Carolina, November, November 4th, and we have our, one of our monthly pop-up career fairs here on November 9th. And again, we're focusing on the TAs, the bus drivers, custodians, and substitute drivers. If everyone will please share and advertise the, the November 9th job fair, please encourage those who are interested in positions with the district.
Any questions for, well, I know we have questions for Mark, so who wants to go first?
Well, my question, athletic department, just, I'll take the first one. If we do not find a head tennis coach or an assistant lacrosse coach or a head cheerleading coach, what's, what's the plan?
Dr. Jean is gonna cut, no.
We're gonna figure it out. I mean, that's what we're doing with, we're gonna figure it out, that's what we're doing with every position. It, it's really tough. I, I mean, not only is it tough about tennis, but we have some core teachers, you know, are we gonna have to look at non-core teacher or specialist and say, you know, what is certification? And we may have to move in there, we can't go without cores, so we're just gonna have to figure it out as we go. Mark did a great presentation on North Carolina, but if you watch the news, or if you have relatives like I do in other states, this is, this is indicative of all school districts. You know, we've had, Ashley, Michelle and I were talking today, and she was talking to some of her colleagues and recently, and they're all in this position. We're all in the position of trying to find good folks. If you, you know, if you drive down Merriman or Henderson Road, you're gonna see signs everywhere for private industry, there is just a shortage of, of applicants, and we're just gonna have to get through it.
So does this have any budget implications in terms of the money that we're saving while we're not filling those vacant positions?
I think that would be more of a Georgia question, but I, I would, sorry, Georgia.
Come on up. Should've told you to come up with Mark anyway, but...
I, I don't think though, that's not what we want to really focus on. I, I understand what you're asking also, Peyton, is that gonna, you know, where we're gonna have some money in savings that we didn't use, and probably, but I would say we're gonna have another presentation that's gonna say, you know, we're gonna be pulling from the reserves more money for facilities, so I think it's a juggling scenario. I don't know what Georgia would say about that.
If I understood the question correctly, you were asking if that would help in our savings?
Not if it would help, but if there's any current offset, I mean, obviously.
Sorry, I didn't realize I turned it off. Not that it would help overall, but just what the offset we're realizing currently from those salaries we're not paying.
Being that we're only into October, we, it will not, unless it goes to full year, we will not see a great savings in that.
And we hope that doesn't last, this does not last the whole year.
Now, I know, Mark, you said that other districts are, are experiencing, so they're having, after your conference, they're having the same, everyone's having the same problem with trying to find people.
I, I wouldn't say all 115, but the majority, the ones that I've, I've talked to are experiencing similar problems and issues with trying to fill positions. I mean, the, the district that I pointed out earlier is, is one of the largest districts in the state, and to have that many vacancies, I mean, I think it's just telling, you know, in, in terms of where we are right now as, as public school system. I just think that's very telling. You can, you could put some of the attention on the pandemic, but I think it's also the nature of where we are with society and folks wanting to work in school systems. They know there's pay issues. I mean, there's, there, there's so many things that we can point the finger at, but I, you know, I'm not gonna stand here and say that, um, I didn't see this coming. I mean, I, I think we've been talking about this for a while.
It's complex.
Yes, very complex, very.
Now, are we, and I, I know the answer is just most likely, we are, are we engaging any outside services as well to try to find people for like our custodians? And I know we have the group that we signed the...
Yes, and they started on the 8th, no, the 18th, ESS.
Of this month, of October?
Yes, yes, they have started, and, and even with the, now, ESS is a substitute agency that's, a company that we've implemented to help us with our substitute teaching. We're also hoping that, that they can help us with some of the, filling some of these roles, permanent positions. But again, Mr. Carter, we're just implementing this, and as I stated before, that it's gonna take some time for, for that to build up, but I think that's a good step in the right direction in terms of the substitute teacher concerns and issues. I, I know teachers have been filling in for other teachers in schools, and, and I know that it's been wearing on them, and, and, and we understand it, we are seeing it firsthand, and, and trying to respond, respond to provide some type of relief in the future. Now, I don't know how quickly that's going to fix the issue, but we're, we're hoping soon.
All right.
I think we just have to be mindful and put Plan Bs in place, because like you said, there's signs everywhere for now hiring, and I, one of my staff sent me a sign today, and I thought about you at Sonic, they were getting paid $20 an hour. If they go up a few more dollars, I might be applying at Sonic, so.
Yeah.
I, I mean, just the difference in pay to go work at Sonic versus, you know, working in the school system is a big part of that complexity.
Yes, yes, indeed. George?
Or, I know this isn't quite about vacancies, but for those, for that, those staff who are covering for each other in the schools, what are, what is the district doing for them? Are we, is there supplemental pay? Is there other, other things we're doing to thank them for, for the extra work they're doing?
Well, I know there are rotations going on in schools where they're covering classes, and I can't really speak right now in terms of any type of incentives or compensation to, to address that support, because I know that it varies amongst schools. I know the high school in particular is one of the biggest contributors of, of, of that peer coverage, and, you know, I will say as a representative from, at this level, there, that level of sacrifice to do that and asking them to do that, I'm sure they're doing it to, you know, you know, make sure that the, the ship is, is staying afloat, and I'm not trying to avoid your question, I, I'm not sure if, if there is something going on within the schools, and I think that's another thing that we are encouraging schools to look at and see, are there's any other incentives that can be done to, to reward and, and, and show the appreciation of what they're doing? There's so many different layers to this. George, I, I think, you know...
I think you have to, uh, there are fiduciary issues when you pay people to fill in spots when it's double dipping, and that sounds terrible, but Georgia, isn't there some factual information about that? It's very complicated, how do you do that? I know Mark was kind of struggling, I don't know if he wanted to say that, but we're constantly talking about that, and there are just rules and regulations about how you have to pay people.
Sure. And I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, I'm just, you know, if, if we're, if we're struggling with hiring people, because it's, and it's not only in our hands, you know, if this is a nationwide thing, you know, what can we control?
So what we didn't bring up, but I think you did, George, in a way, is that not only do we have spaces that we need applicants for, but we also have a high degree of absenteeism. I'm, I'm not making a value statement about that, so not only do you have spaces that aren't filled, but you have to cover the spaces of folks that are absent also. So it just makes it even more difficult. People aren't applying for positions, and then you have people that are in positions that may be absent, and so you don't have somebody filling the full time, and then filing the subs is very difficult.
And I'm gonna say this because I know I've gotten comments, people have commented on this to me, but I know that our central office staff are actually pushing into the schools to help with covering these classrooms when there are classes down, I do know that, and I want to thank you for doing that, but I'm saying this more for the audience that's listening right now, because, like I said, I've gotten several people who have said, well, what is central office doing? Where are the, why are they not going out and helping? And they are. Just because you aren't in the school to see them doesn't mean they're not out there. So I do want to make sure that, that people understand that, and also along those same lines, I know, Georgia, you might be able to speak more to this. I, I think the board received an email, someone saying, well, why can't we use ESAR funds to pay extra or give incentive or, or help out our employees? And I didn't think we could, so if that is something that we can do, that's something we need to look at, but do you have any other information on that, Georgia?
I can say that the applications that have been approved for our ESAR funds we have received to date were not for bonuses for staff.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Dickerson? I appreciate the information. Again, it, it's, you know, we can always hear, oh, we have this vacancy, we have this vacancy, but to actually see it all out, and I hope everyone was paying attention. But to actually see it all out, and I hope everyone was paying attention, um, if you know, you know, if you wanna be a part-time bus driver for our preschool, I can tell you right now that Susanna Smith will make you a cake if you wanna do it. She would be very happy, uh, 'cause that can definitely help her. But if you know of anyone, and I'm saying this to the audience, uh, that's watching, if you know anyone who's looking for a job, please, uh, come and see us and attend our, our, our job fair and see what we can do. We can, we can make this work. So.
I'm just wondering if we could maybe, um, the bus driver situation is, is almost desperate. Do we have just a, a little brief explanation of what you would need in order to become a bus driver? How old do you have to be? Do you have to have a particular kind of license? What kind of training do you have to have?
The video. We have a video posted on our website that we just created, and they can, they can refer to that. But, you know, one of the things that, you know, that you have to obtain your CDL, um, commercial driver's license. I, I would encourage those.
Is there a cost to that, Mark?
Uh, yes, there is. Um, help me out with the price. I can't remember. It escapes me right now, but it's.
How much?
Yes.
We, we reimbursed it? Okay.
What was the price?
$100.
$100 to get your CDL, but you do get that back.
Yeah, and that, there is a examination to, 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 to obtain all that. But, you know, those who are seriously considering, if you know someone who's seriously considering, please, uh, you can have them contact, uh, myself or April Dockery. I, I, I think, you know, sometimes lack of information, people just, just don't know. And once they find out, they just wanna be guided. And, um, the more we talk about this, the more we can attract and identify people who will wanna, who wanna do this. Uh, I believe there are people out there that, that just haven't heard.
Yeah, and that, that begs the question of, you know, ba- considering previous years, what are we doing differently this year? Like where, what are, and James kind of mentioned this, but what other avenues are we using to find employees?
So we're, you know, created this video, hoping that if people are interested in. Four videos. I wanna re- emphasize, we created four videos, uh, to emphasize the, the different areas and departments uh, in need. Uh, also, you know, the, the usual, um, strategy is to go to job fairs. You know, job fairs are opening up now and we're going to sites. We're also, um, asking them to come here. Uh, we're doing more, um, Ashville City Schools related career fairs and job fairs. Uh, in the past, it hasn't been the case. Normally, we would do one at the end of the year. Now, we've had one, we've had three so far in this year, knowing that, um, we just need to get the word out. And, you know, we also depend on the community, um, to share and, 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 uh, ask people to, if they even, if they're even questioning or wondering to know, wanna know more about Ashville City Schools and, and the particular job opportunities, they can contact principals. It's just, it, it doesn't have to be one way of communicating this. Um, so I'm sure I'm missing something else.
So, I'm wondering, WLOS oftentimes does a really nice job for us getting information out. I'm wondering if perhaps they could do a story for us on that? And I'm wondering if perhaps the little news that goes across the bottom of the screen, if that could be put on that little news strip, because that would get out to everyone.
Ashley, would you please?
Miss, Miss Geitner, we have been incredibly fortunate and I, I applaud your suggestion. We also have been incredibly fortunate that WLOS has done a few stories about our, um, pop-up career fairs. So we appreciate, and we, Andrew, we would always appreciate additional coverage, but we have received that coverage from WLOS.
Absolutely. They've always been really good for us. So we would appreciate anything you could possibly do. Thank you.
Awesome.
Do we have any other questions for Dr. Dickerson? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for your support.
Next, uh, we have maintenance updates with Ms. Christie Coats.
Good afternoon, Board Chair. I'm Chair Dr. Freeman and Board Members. Today, I would like to share with you some facility updates, capital needs for our schools. In 2019, 20, we went to the School Capital Fund Commission and asked for, uh, funding for Lucy S. Herring in which is been designed and DPI has approved, and we are working on starting that project. This current year, we went to the School Capital Fund Commission and asked for funding for Asheville High School, for the HVAC abatement and all the, the things. And I have linked it there so that you're, you can view that. And the security assessments over the, we, we currently have 220,000. They gave us 110 in 2019, 20, and another 110 this year. So we will be using that. This is just an overview of what our needs are for each facility. These are critical and high priority needs and also things that are in process.
So I'm seeing a total of $50 million?
Yes.
Is that what I'm seeing at the bottom? Okay. Well, we're rounding up to 51.
I'm just gonna kinda let you guys look through these and tell me if you have any questions, and then I will finish up with, at the end.
So, on Asheville High School, will you explain what some of the pictures are so that people can understand what we're looking at?
Yes. So, on the left, that is the Asheville High School auditorium. Unfortunately, in the very front of that, the, the auditorium, we are not able to, uh, get those ceiling tiles anymore. Um, the back part, we are. That is where the grid is falling. I closed off the top part when I got into this position. In the fire marshal report that I just read, we have been written up. This is the fourth time. So I talked to her and she is going to talk to her boss to see what I can do until we can get this fixed. I did, um, get a design, an architectural firm over there to see what we can do. This is gonna be a little bit more intense of a project, because when you do the ceiling, you get into a lot of other things in the auditorium. That is a, in the next picture, that is a portable air conditioning unit. The next one, if you will notice, that is Derek Edwards' foot. That is the front stairwell going up into the auditor, I mean, into the main building. Kids do use this, um, to go up through there. So it is a safety concern for me.
So the mortar has worn away or have the stones shifted?
The stones have shifted. Some have, you know, some of them have gone down into the, um, there. And we have groundhogs that live in there too, so.
Wait a minute. Groundhogs living where? Under the front steps?
Well, I, I, you've gotta just wait until you do.
Oh, we, we, we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I want you to see the red line.
Okay.
In a few minutes.
Oh, I didn't.
You didn't include that?
I don't have that.
I, I would like for you to share that with the board.
I can, yes.
We actually had someone do a, um, red line on our, a red line on our, um, campus layout where the groundhogs are, and it's massive. They have, uh, created holes that the, um, uh, the track is now having some issues. We gotta fix the gra- we have to fix the groundhogs before we fix all this, spend hundreds, no, tens of millions, uh, before we do it. We've got a real, I mean, it sounds funny. It's not funny at all. We have a real groundhog issue. Um, and, uh, if you would send that to the board, that would be great.
I will. So, um, as Dr. Jean was saying in the next, uh, set of pictures, you will notice, at the top right, that is, um, something that we have put over the sinkhole. It continues to get larger. We do have people on site putting cameras through those pipes to see where we're at.
We do have the sinkhole combed off too.
We do.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that whole, um, they're gonna have to redo the whole bank. After, unfortunately, the den for the groundhogs is in that bank.
And where is that exactly?
That is above the, uh, football field.
On the visitor side or the home side?
It's where the scoreboard is.
Okay, back, okay, where the scoreboard is, okay.
Um, and we actually, I just wanna be as transparent as I can. We have noticed that there is a crack in the tennis court. That.
From groundhogs?
Well, we're not sure.
But they're tunnel.
We're, they're tunnelled there, yes. So, you know, it's just something that I want you to be aware of. We are working on this. This wall will be, um, hopefully finished this year. Um, on the down, down below, on the right, you will notice that is the baseball field, the new baseball field. Um, we have sandbags holding back the gravel and the, um, dirt when we have rain. So, we do have, um, the, um, City of Asheville permanent, I mean, not, yes, um, I'm sorry, the, um, oh, what's it called? Anyway, water system, um, they're looking, we are getting a new, that is all gonna be paved, new drainage, and we will have some, um, curbs put up so that it doesn't continue to go on to the baseball field. And, you know, I don't, do you want me to, you want me to keep?
What's picture number four to your left?
Are you talking about?
That one, the one with the, the, the red, the red.
Floor?
Not the floor, the one next to the one with the floor. The gray one, the ceiling one.
Okay, that is, that is. That's a kitchen hood vent?
Yes.
That is laying up there that is not connected.
Is the price of that to remove the groundhogs in the $26 million?
The price that we have worked with someone is around, uh.
$11,000.
$11,000?
In, in all, right, Georgia?
$11,000 to re, to.
To remove.
Remove the groundhog.
Yep.
Asheville Middle School, one of our newer buildings. A high priority is the track, because in probably five years, we will need to replace that track. But the bleachers currently that are on that field, let's see if I have a picture, that is the only bleachers we have on the Asheville Middle School football field.
Really?
Bleachers these days are about $15,000.
We only have one set, correct?
Right. They were, they were there when, when we were there, James, the same ones.
Yes.
Yeah, that, I mean, that looks, that looks right, yeah.
Get rid of the wood one that they had up against the fence. But I thought the city was supposed to help pay for those bleachers.
So, yes, they're, they're actually, we're in contact with City Parks and Rec. And we're looking at maybe a concession stand and also some restrooms. It's called a field house, I think, is what April was telling me today. I have met with them and we're trying to come up with the money. Asheville Middle School, um, we are working on the controls issue now. We had to replace some dielectric unions today. Um, they were rusted, but, um, hopefully we'll get to where we will not have to have portable air conditioning units in that school, which is definitely not energy efficient. Um, but we are working on that.
Christie, is that a, would you go back one, is that a window just open?
Yes, because they have cardboard there to ventilate one of the air conditioners.
Gotcha. I see it. Okay, I see it right there. Thank you.
Cardboard or wood? I'm not sure.
It, it could be some plywood, yes. Montford North Star. We would like to, and in our School Capital Fund Commission, redo the lower level restrooms, boys and girls. Notice to the top right, that is the Montford gym wall, I mean, ceiling that needs to be replaced. Some of it is falling. Um, and then you will notice the gym floor down on the right, that is also in there, because underneath there, the membrane, I'm sorry, the mastic is asbestos. So as we're doing those projects, we have to look at the asbestos that's involved in that.
Wait a minute, wait. Okay, so I remember going to Randolph, and I remember when they changed it to a gym. We used asbestos in the late 80s, early 90s?
That, just the mastic. The floor tiles are not.
The mastic, okay.
And I have the report on that, James, if you'd like to see it.
I would love to see that, yes.
And that's just more of their restrooms downstairs.
And one question about the, where are we on the retaining wall issue? I know that we were waiting on the city.
We were waiting on the city to release the easement, but they have released it, and we should be moving forward probably in the next week or so.
Perfect, thank you.
So Christie, the bathrooms that we see on the, that page, are those upstairs or downstairs?
Downstairs.
And are they still elementary?
Now, we do have some upstairs though, too, when I walked with Shannon.
Okay, so are the, all right, so since that was an elementary school for a long time? And it used to be that the, the restrooms were still downstairs, were still for elementary kids. Has that been changed, or are they still the size for elementary kids?
I don't wanna give you any inaccurate information. My understanding is the downstairs ones are still small kids.
Okay.
They have not been redone. That, that's what I've been told several times, that the downstairs bathrooms have not been redone.
The students come upstairs.
The upstairs bathrooms have been done, but there was one that was being worked on. Has that been completed upstairs? I'm not sure if we know that. Okay.
I can look into it though, when I do my walkthroughs.
Okay.
Asheville Primary, $6,973,000, but, um, on that one, I don't have a lot of pictures. I do know currently, with the windows, the chipping of the paint on the windows and the court, I call it the courtyard area, Tama could help me and Susanna. We have to do all the windows on the whole campus, because, um, the inspection, uh, person said we had to, so. We're waiting on that quote to come in.
All the windows have to be.
They all have to be straight because they're on the campus and they chip, the paint chips and.
There's lead, there's lead paint on the windows.
But, but the windows, I mean, they're no good anyway.
Right, the windows are old, okay.
This is the most concerning to me, but Tama reassured me that students do not walk out on this. I mean, I had to go back in and ask Tama. She's like, no, 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 they, they don't go out there. If you will notice, um, the handrail here, um, is not to code. The wor- the thing, if you'll notice, do you see where the, the blocks are? There's a sloping issue there. We were just over there with some architects and engineers. There's some sloping issues there where water is going inside the building. These stairs are barely hanging on. They, the very front part of them, you can see all the way through underneath the front part of them are on some of the.
So no kids use that at all, Tama?
Never.
So is that a, anything, I mean, is that a, um, an egress for fire or anything? Those are classroom doors? Are, are it classrooms?
They're both classrooms, um, one's art and one's music, and both classrooms have two exits, so we never got those.
So those doors are locked all the time?
They are, mm-hmm. Staff don't go out, and students don't go out, but we don't use them.
Next is Claxton. Um, you'll see a wall in the gym area. The other day, we had to go out. There's some settling issues going on there. I had a structural engineer go out, um, with me and Don and look at that. Um, so the engineer caused and possibly repaired, these numbers, please understand, are very preliminary estimates. Um, I do know the fire alarm is gonna cost thirty thousand dollars. Um, and the two original stairwells? And, I, I won't even, okay, we need to put railing on top of them for them to be safe for students. That's, yes. Um, and then just, uh, replace chill wa, chiller and chill water piping. I do know we have some people out there looking at that and we may be able to, like, limp it along for a while. So, on the left, this is what I was trying to tell you, on the left, that is Asheville High School. When I was in one of the stairwells, I looked, that is what we would need to do at Claxton. Claxton's the next one with the blue and the red. That's what we need to do there to make it safe for students. Um, the next one is a picture of our, um, freezer at one of the schools. Um, and we have addressed the roof issue last year, but we still need to address some of the insulation problems and leaks in the schools. We have already spent eighteen thousand dollars with Dover Insulation, replacing, uh, bad insulation at some of our schools.
You told me that figure, so replacing insulation, we've spent so far?
Basically on chill water pipelines, the joints, Dixon was a big one, but also the preschool was one, when they went in and did, um, some of them, they didn't do the hallway. So, when I was over there, I noticed there was a line going down the hall, and so when we investigated it, we noticed that-
But the insulation has, we spent twenty-five thousand on, just on insulation?
We've currently spent eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand.
Here's Hall Fletcher. They, we're doing a new fire alarm there also. And then those, um, other things we were gonna take to the school capital fund commission this coming year. This is Hall Fletcher's roof, that needs to be replaced.
So, that's a membrane roof, what is that roof gonna cost, five hundred thou, I'm sorry? That is a membrane roof, that's gonna be what, five hundred thousand?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Approximately, could cost more. The thing with construction right now, as everything is, it's hard to get supplies. And so, there's a certain part of a roof, I'm, I'm learning all these things, um, that is a year out. So, we've got designers looking at this currently, looking at it. So, like I said, it would be a year before we can get it done, but we've got it in process and we've got the money encumbered out of our capital funds this year. This is Jones.
What's the dollar figure for the ADA access?
It is not on there, I'm so sorry, I was just working on that, I haven't gotten the figure back yet.
Okay.
We're looking at thirty-five, three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars per door.
Which is, uh, gonna be thirty to fifty thousand. One thing that we don't have on here that I think is important is that, um, it's on Ashley, Michelle. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, the playground in the back of Jones is desperately needed.
Mm-hmm.
That figure is not in that.
I did-
Oh, did you? And what have we got, uh, so when we hear Jones Park, shouldn't we be doing-
Yes.
This first?
That is correct. I'm sorry?
The primary floor. Is not on here.
I didn't hear, I can't-
The primary floor, pri, the primary floor is not on there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, but what do we have allocated for a playground for these children? Was that-
Two hundred thousand.
And does-
And the reason, Dr. Jean, is because if you'll notice, and Rafika, you might can help me with this. The, the way I got the pictures, it is, this is not, it will have to be graded and even. It's currently not safe the way that it is. Um, the ba, the basketball court needs to be resurfaced, um, which it's, it's pretty bad. It would need to be milled and redone. Um, and they also only have, Rafika, help me here, where's the other thing? Where's the other?
Rafika, come up to the mic.
So, when I went over and talked with Rafika and looked at what the three-five has to play on, um, Rafika, what are those called, that, they have two, two things, basically?
The spin, the spinners that we have out there, and then like this dome shape, um, structure that our students play on. And so, these pictures up here is specifically for our three-five playground. And our PTO is trying to help with raising some money to help with funding a new playground structure and an entire playground, um, redo for us. But the cost is pretty hefty, and so what we've been talking about is doing it in phases versus doing it all at once because of the amount of money that's required to upgrade the playground and also because of the amount of work that's required to upgrade our playground.
So, Rafika, what about the area that we've just demolished? Is that, are we gonna do anything with that?
I think that's the bigger discussion outside of the school.
That's a separate-
That's a separate, yep.
Yeah.
But I, I, we have got to really start thinking about, my, my recommendation is, what are we spending on K-12 kids? You know, is that for K-12 kids or is that a community endeavor? Rafika has been asking since she became principal there about this playground in the back. Those kids, three, grades three through five deserve a playground.
And we do have, again, like, there are, there's a member, there are different members of our pla, um, PTO and parent committee who's been very instrumental in helping us to map out a plan. So, we have a plan for it, um, it's just a matter of now having the funding needed in order to implement the plan. So, we have a solid plan in place.
And the way that we would help with that would be degrading? And we would work with Play Nation also to maybe get a few of the items that are needed.
So, from last year's budget, there was a play structure that was purchased, um, for our playground, our three-five playground. But there are some additional costs that goes along with that structure because we need a fall zone and that was not factored into the cost. And we need to do the upgrades to the playground before we can actually put that play structure out there. And that was only one structure, so we are hoping to have an additional one. At the time, that was just all that was budgeted for us to put on the playground.
So, where is that, Rafika, where is that structure?
That's a very good question.
I've never heard of this at all.
Yeah, so Georgia might be able to help with that because, remember, we purchased, so it was, um, it was in the budget and it was purchased, but I don't think that purchase went through because there were additional, like, the, um, fall structure that was needed, the fall zone structure that was needed, that part never happened, so I don't really know what happened.
So, we'll, we'll look into that-
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
So, Dr. Jean, something that we are doing currently is walking through and looking at all the playgrounds because each year we do get a budgeted amount for playgrounds, and so I'll make sure you get that information.
Yeah, so, this structure, if we bought it, should be somewhere.
Or it sounds like it didn't go through and we didn't purchase it, so-
We'll, we'll, we'll look into it.
I look forward to seeing the answers from, from everyone tomorrow, so.
So, I, I don't wanna-
You go back to Jones for a minute? I don't wanna pick on Jones, but I am, is that the refrigerator in the kitchen?
Yes, that's the freezer.
The freezer, okay.
That is freezing over, so, just so you know what our plan is, um, after finding these things, we, we are going to start monitoring all of our, uh, refrigerators and, um, freezers because, one, it's hard to get food right now.
Right.
We pay to store our food, when we bring the food to the schools, we want our babies to have food. So, we have to, this is a huge part of preventative maintenance, to keep the food where it needs to be so that we do, we are able to feed the students.
Where is that on your cost here? I, I don't see it under high priority and I don't see it under critical needs.
We have the connections already.
Okay.
They're just not hooked up.
So, it, okay, so it just needs to be hooked up properly, is it?
We're, we're working on that, yes.
Okay, alright.
Dixon. We're dealing with a lot of HVAC controls there, windows on the roof and roof repairs and insulation and fencing. This is the roof. Um, we have to make the repairs because we have already replaced a wall. This roof, probably, I, I'm wanting to say right now, we're looking at five thousand dollars to repair, but as they get there, it may cost more.
Five thousand for which one?
Just for roof repairs on the Dixon roof.
Okay.
But it, as they look into it, it may cost more.
Is it common to have, uh, 'cause we had roof problems at the middle school, too. Is that common with such new buildings to have?
No.
No, they can't, we don't have a warranty?
We-
They come back and all the money we spent on those buildings-
These two, these are our two newest schools, and for the roof issues with our two newest schools, um, I, I-
We have contacted the companies.
Mm-hmm.
We're working with one, the other company, um-
So, have we had, um, have we had Chris or Cynthia look at the warranties? These buildings, I mean, I know there's a, a timeframe from which, when a building's built that we can contact them for any, um, uh, punch item list, but this metal roof would have a warranty on it, I would think, for a longer period of time. Have we asked our solicitors to look at the warranty on, on these roofs?
I have not.
If, we probably need to do that because I would think, I, how old is Dixon, I'd-
Four years old, is that correct?
Yeah, I would, I would get those warranties, see if we can pull them and get them to Chris and, um-
So, we believe that the roof warranty was only probably for a year, but the membrane, the membrane manufacturer is who we believe we need to call.
So, is this a metal roof or a membrane?
It's a membrane.
Membrane.
That, this part here.
So, I guess, you know, here's where I'm at, and I guess I need direction in this. We literally have water flowing down some of the walls getting in the buildings. We have already replaced a wall. Do I wait and let this company come and fix this, which I totally agree, I think that's what we should do. But when they come and just caulk it and we have to keep replacing walls-
Yeah, but we, we've gotta see what our warranty says.
I, I agree, I agree.
And then I think we go from there because obviously caulking's not gonna do it, but the warranty should have something in it about what the fix of it would be. I, so we'll, we'll look at that tomorrow and try to pull the warranties and get them over to Chris.
Okay, and the windows on the roof. So, we are replacing ten windows, um, where it was, it was so cold in the building when the-
So, has the seal in the window broke or, okay?
So, what, what happened? It got so cold that what?
So, the gym area was so cold inside where the heat from the sun hit the windows, it cracked them all. So, we're, we're working on getting those replaced.
But that's a design flaw. But anyway, we'll, we'll talk more about it later. I mean, and we've talked about all this stuff, a lot.
Yeah, multiple times. Um, this is Lucy S. Herring, this one, this one is being funded by School Capital Fund Commission. The softball field upgrades, I went out there, uh, where the girls play softball. We're trying to get, um, that to where it's at least decent for the girls to play. Um, you will notice that is the softball field currently. Um, and that is what we have over the roof when they play.
Um, wasn't the softball field a part of, uh, agreement with Parks and Rec?
It was, it was, have you looked into that? You remember that big old, we had, we had about the-
Oh, yes.
No, 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 at Herring.
That was there.
This is gonna be us.
And they were supposed to build a, some, uh, like bathrooms out there as well.
But I remember that, 'cause I just came on the board when all that happened, and so we need to get in touch with Parks and Rec on-
I have already spoken to them, yes.
Okay.
So, they're gonna help with some. Um, you know, they have had some turnover, too, so Allison, I've been talking to Allison Danes. This is just a, at a glint, I, I, what I did was I pulled the two thousand eighteen, nineteen utility bills for power, water, and gas because that was the, the last year we had kids all year. Um, so you will see, um, the students that were on our, um, uh, Power School Report from Holly at the end of the year, ADM. That is our numbers, and then that is the cost per facility annually, that's the annual cost. So, then we broke it down into cost per student. And that's what we're paying. Another, I think something else that would be really good for you guys to see would be how much we're paying per square foot because a lot of our facilities are not energy efficient at all.
That would, if you can pull that, that would be great.
But we're gonna get there. My main focus right now is preventative maintenance.
And I know, um, I'd had a conversation, Georgia, come on up. I know.
Getting those steps in.
That's what the fit bit's for. Um, my question is in regards to, uh, we are in October, we just started school October, it's August twenty-third. Where are we in terms of our budget on fixing things right now?
So, as you know, the bu, the, um, board just approved the budget resolution, um, with an additional two million from the fund balance of the capital fund. Currently, to date, we have one point five that we have already spent or encumbered by a promise to spend with, um,
Does that mean we have five hundred thousand?
Quotes or proposals.
Does that mean we have five hundred thousand left?
Of, no, the two million.
No.
Say it again.
So, and I don't have them right on top of my head, but we have, um, close to five million that we have budgeted, close to five million. We've, we're in mid-October and we are already, um, have spent one point five million of that. I can tell you that maintenance is finding things daily that are critical needs for safety for students and safety for our buildings, preventative maintenance, that, um, can't wait for three to five years. So, those are unplanned expenses for this year.
Thank you, thank you for that. And I, I want people to also understand who are listening and watching, um, we have very old buildings and, and that's something that, uh, I don't think that a lot of people understand, uh, the, the, I don't-
Uh, the, the, I don't, and maybe you can get this information for us, Kristi. Kristi, the average age of our buildings is, I mean, we have, Ashwell High is a historic site. Um, it's on the Historic Register. I know, um, Ashwell Primary School, uh, is on there. I know, I think Claxton is also on there as well. So you, we have some very old, old buildings. Um, and just like an old house, it takes a lot to keep it up. Um, it, it really does take a lot to keep it up. Uh, my house is over a hundred years old, and God knows I put a lot of money into it. Um, so I can only imagine what happens with our schools, so. Uh, but we also have to make sure that we're doing the preventative maintenance, as Kristi said. And that's, that's what's costing us right now is the things that should have been done years ago. And I emphasize, years ago, were not done. So again, uh, this didn't all happen within the last year. These are issues that we've been working on or, or have been building up over the, over time, so. Um, does anyone have any questions for Kristi? I don't wanna even ask any more questions. Do you, you might tell us something else? Can you, um, give me a synopsis or give us a synopsis about what a preventative maintenance plan is gonna look like for our schools?
Yes, so what we will do is we will have a, I, I've looked into some things that will help us do that. So that will be going over the roofs, making sure roof drains, all the things, the structure of the building is intact. Making sure we're not getting water in the building, which then causes more problems. HVAC, checking the units, cleaning them. The life long, I mean, the life expectancy of those will last longer. We won't have to replace those. I'm trying to think what else is preventative. Just, and one of my goals is to go through the schools and look for things. Because if you look for things and you find things before they happen, then you're not causing another problem. So we are going, I would like to put a maintenance schedule in place where we're walking the roofs every six months. We're checking, uh, gutters, drains. We're looking at the HVAC units, making sure they're running properly, the controls are right, that we're not running them so strong that the condensation pipes are sweating so bad. We're replacing insulation. Those are the thing, those are my main goals. Um, but the other thing I wanna do, and years and years and years ago, when I worked in the maintenance department and looked at the utilities and stuff, I wanna make sure we have a plan, like, know where our meters are. And if a meter goes up for water cost, electricity, that we go in and say, hey, man, this, this meter's reading really high. You might wanna go out and check it. Or the water bill went way up in this area, you might wanna check it. Normally, when I did that, there was a water leak or there was a new, uh, lab that was put in, something. But we had an answer for these problems.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think the calendar is, is effective. I mean, Jane's thinking about your house, you know, an, an old house. You have to have a maintenance plan.
You have to.
I would also encourage, you know, our community, but you, you have, um, at every school, you have custodial staff and nutrition specialists who are in those buildings every day. And I mean, I'm sure you're doing this, but just utilizing the people who are in those buildings every day to be able to say. So I just, so I guess the question is, um, what's the protocol? If someone, you know, let's say, you know, custodian in our schools notices something, can, do they have direct contact with you to say, hey, this is what I've noticed?
So the principals ha- all have my number. They know they can call me, but we have a work order system. They, there's one person at each school that the staff would notify, and they put in a work order. And then we assign it to the plumber, electrician, HVAC, wherever it may go. Currently, I am looking at those work orders, going through them with the guys each, every other week. We're going through them and looking at them and seeing what's critical.
There were NR and Christie's addressing them organizational structure issues on, on workflow that is a whole separate item other than this that we're working on to get that worked out. And the board should expect an update on facilities every year.
I would actually see it as every six months, so.
Certainly, in this point, I would, yeah, every six months. But, um, I think, you know, wh- what we're trying to impart, which makes some people feel uncomfortable, is that trust but verify.
Right.
In everything that we're doing here. And, um, you know, and I will just say, we've got Kristi, I'm trying to get her to stay for five years, but she says she will not. But we've got her for two years, and we gotta figure out what we're gonna do with this once not only Kristi, but anybody else that's vital to this organization. That's a structural issue that we gotta look at. Who's, because this really is a significant job here.
Oh, yeah.
When you have facilities and a campus that have as many buildings as we do.
And we have, you know, looking at, just looking at the opening slide of the, you know, the, we did get funded for the seven point three at Ashwell High, but that's a drop in the bucket, uh, for that campus, uh, when our total needs were over twenty-six. Uh, so, and, you know, everyone's gonna go to Ashwell High slash Silsa at some point or another. Um, all of our students are gonna go through there at some point, so. You know, I, I was chatting the other day, and I, I don't know what we would do if something, if we had to close that campus down. I don't know where we would put fourteen hundred students, um, if we had to do that. So, uh, we've gotta make sure that we're taking care of, of, of our buildings, uh, but especially the building that's right now our largest campus, so. Thank you. Uh, I look forward to seeing the red line information about the groundhogs. Groundhogs. Um, and I understand that there were even burrows in the sinkhole, uh, that's formed at the campus, so. We have a lot of work to do, but Kristi, thank you so much for your diligence. You're doing an excellent job with this, and I know I've said that this evening as well for everyone else, but you, you, you're really taking this by the, by the reins, so thank you. Any other questions for Kristi?
Thank you so much.
Alright, um, that's all for our presentations this evening. Just a reminder that we have a two-hour delay for Ashwell High and, I'm sorry, for the middle schools and the high schools on this coming Wednesday, October twenty-seventh. Next Monday is our regularly scheduled work session and closed session for November. Uh, and then on November eighth will be our regularly scheduled board meeting. Uh, does anyone have anything else, uh, before we adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn? And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming.